Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the formal meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This is June 28th. I would please ask for the roll call. So Juanita.
Good morning Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Galvin.
Here.
Supervisor Sellers.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Chairman Hickman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Today, it is being sponsored by my vice chairman or our vice chairman, Jack Sellers. If you would like to introduce your guest.
Yes, I would like to do that. And our guest is online, Rabbi Israel Nelson. He's a second generation Messianic Jewish rabbi and has served as the spiritual leader of congregation Beth Emanuel in Chandler, Arizona for the past 10 years. He has also served as an elder of Bethel Church, a non-denomination Christian church, also located in Chandler, for 14 years. Before serving in various ministry capacities, Israel was involved in business in Israel and internationally as a part of the executive leadership of Gaatronix, a Tybaryus-based design and manufacturing company. He and his wife Cindy reside with their nine children in Queen Creek, Arizona. And I will just say that Rabbi Nelson's leadership is one of the reasons for the strength of our region. And I really appreciate him being here with us today. So would you all please stand?
Thank you. Good morning. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, we acknowledge our need for you. You are the source of wisdom, of understanding, of goodness, of compassion. And we ask for you, God, give us what you have, your mind, your thoughts, your heart, Lord. We thank you, Father, that you bless your people. And I pray, God, we ask for blessing on our neighborhoods, on our communities, on our homes, on our families, on our children, Lord. And I pray a blessing on each of you, public servants, that you would have God's heart for the people and you'd have His mind and wisdom as you make decisions today. We thank you, Father. You're so generous to give us the things we ask for. And so we ask for them in the name of Jesus Yeshua, your Son. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, Israel, thank you so much for joining us this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll do, I'm going to go a little bit out of order telling our attorneys that, but I'll go ahead and do this one, which is item number four, the pet showcase, because I know they're online right now. So we'll call up Callie, nice-looking, nice-looking doggy. So Callie, are you with us today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys today?
Very good.
This is Paz here with me. It's a one-year-old husky mix. Come here Paz. Very, very sweet little dog, big dog. Perfect combination of energy and gentleness. He's very hyper, but very calm about it, if that makes sense. He doesn't knock anybody down. He still is very puppy-ish. He got into my trash twice while we were waiting and took a Kleenex out. But as you can see, he's just a super, super sweet little dog. And he's available for foster. We're actually getting ready to go into our busiest season, our Fourth of July season is right around the corner. And we are, we're offering day fosters and overnight fosters to everybody to help us deal with the high intakes for the Fourth of July. We're asking pet owners to keep their fosters through, I think, the 14th to give us a little bit of a reprieve for the high intakes that we're expecting.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Callie, for joining us and pinch hitting today. Did a great job.
Thank you.
So keep up the good work over at the shelter.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I skip out of order, Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Chairman Supervisors, I do have one announcement. On page 11, item number 17, under superintendent of schools, or school superintendent, I'm sorry, it is a clarification to the dollar amount to clarify that $4,873 of the $5,459 was received and spent in a prior year. It's just a clarification.
And that would be on item number 16?
Item number 17.
17. Budget adjustment. Okay. Okay, very good. If you guys can remember while you make the motion. Thank you. Okay. So I know that we have, are blessed to have county manager remarks, so it's on the agenda, but I'm going to move up partial a little bit of it. Yesterday, there was a, and has been a fire in District 2. And as we were talking about it, it's just like, well, we have our county manager and emergency response is extremely important under her direction. And I just thought you might like the chance to give an assessment right now.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Yes, unfortunately, we did have a fire in District 2 that was near the Rio Verde foothills area. And Scottsdale Fire contacted our emergency managed, county emergency management late yesterday afternoon and asked for us to set up our EOC, which we did. And Department of Emergency Management staff immediately rushed to our operations center and had it running in just such a short period of time. They did a tremendous job. And fortunately, we had some favorable winds yesterday. Just for some background for those that may not be completely aware of the fire that could be listening into this meeting, it's approximately 2,500 to 3,000 acres. They're still stating 0% containment as of right now, but that may be adjusted as the day progresses. As you're aware, McDowell Mountain Park is right there, and the fire has impacted the park. The park staff did a tremendous job closing the park. Park also has a fire break along the north side, which we understand has held and has also helped the community out there. I have, just as you all have been getting, I have some up-to-date information that just came in. The evacuation is still in place, and Cactus Shadows High School remains open for anyone that needs their help for housing. And then also the rodeo grounds in Cave Creek, there is a lot of livestock and horses up in Rio Verde that is available for people that need to evacuate their horses and other livestock. It appears that the evacuation is going to remain in place until we get through the critical fire weather, which is forecasted for today. We understand there's possibly some high winds forecasted, so we don't want to lift the evacuation order until the fire is contained and the weather is more predictable. We also, Parks is, McDowell Mountain Park is remaining closed. They have MCSO personnel that also were out there last night to manage any traffic issues for people that are needing to evacuate and also ensuring that people are aware that the park is still closed and keeping people safe. Park said that the hot shots made great progress last night, so just tremendous thanks and appreciation to the fire crews who are out there. There's air tankers that are going to be back in the air during the day today fighting it. And according to RJ, who just sent this in, they got all around the southeast flank in the park. So right now, it's approximately from 120th Street to 164th Street is where the diamond fire is. They aren't thinking it's going to move much this morning, but again, as I mentioned earlier, concerned about the afternoon winds. So we have crews from all over the state, and I am really pleased to say that our system, our emergency system, worked well. The resources are available to help people, and the resources are there to fight this fire. We have had no injuries, no fatalities, and have lost one outbuilding. So that is great news. And then also, thank you to this board in particular. You know, Chairman Hickman, you were ready to declare an emergency if needed. And then Supervisor Galvin, just being in touch with the community and feeding that information to us so we could share it with the EOC was really valuable, that they could adjust and provide resources as needed. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, before I start any questions, I just wanted to thank my chief of staff. Scott Eishem called me before I could even get home from my other job and let me know that everybody was talking. So I appreciated that. And then I appreciated my phone call with you and your district, Tom. So I don't have any questions. I appreciate the quick response because, you know, it's hard from, to know what's going on, but it's great to hear that everybody pulled together and we've not lost life or one outbuilding, but happy for that community thus far. It's not over, but I hope, I hope everything goes according to plan. Supervisor Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Ms. Perkorski, thank you so much for that update and thank you for all of the work you did last night. But I think, once again, this is a testament to all of the great people and staff we have here at Maricopa County. But not only Maricopa County, all the different jurisdictions and agencies and departments that had to work together, including the city of Scottsdale, people at the state level, the sheriff's office. I just want to congratulate and thank everyone. This is a community that was very scared last night. People were very worried. The fire moved very fast. If you see photos, they are very scary to see. Can you only imagine if you put yourself in that position? And so I'm grateful to them to relaying information to us in real time so we can help deploy our resources in a better and faster way. But Jen, thank you so much.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Okay. We are ready to roll unless there's any other questions. Then we will head on to number, item number five, back in order again to real estate. Number five is Maricopa County APS Utility Easement. This action requires unanimous consent of the board. The board will now consider item number five.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number five.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Supervisor Gates.
Aye.
Supervisor Galvin.
Aye.
Supervisor Sellers.
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Aye.
Chairman Hickman.
Aye. Moving on, under statutory hearings, under clerk of the board, number six is a liquor license application. A is new license for Wells County store. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on item number 6A?
Chairman, I do not have any speaker forms for this item.
Thank you, Juanita. The board will now consider item 6A.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 6A.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under statutory hearings, clerk of the board continued, number seven is an impact statement hearing for the proposed Woodland Terrace Irrigation Water Delivery District. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on item number seven?
Chairman, I did receive one speaker form from James Lizias, representing the Irrigation Water Delivery District. He is available to speak in favor only if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move approval of item number seven.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And thank you for joining us today for item number seven. Okay, under statutory hearings, transportation, 8A through C, road file declarations, road file number A728, road file number A727, road file number A726. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items 8A through C?
Chairman, none received for this item.
Thank you, Juanita. The board will now consider item 8A through C. The board will now consider item eight, A through C.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items eight A through C.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Officers, Board of Supervisors, number nine, resignation from the Industrial Development Authority Board of Directors. Number ten is a reappointment and appointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee. The board will now consider items nine and ten.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve items nine and ten, and I have a comment on number nine.
Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is to accept the resignation of Ron Westad from the Industrial Development Authority. Ron Westad has served the Board with distinction, and I appreciate his service representing District Two and the Industrial Development Authority Board of Directors. He served on the IDA since April of 2015, and he was president of the Board in 2019 and 2020. And I recently met with him, and we had a very good conversation about his role, his experience on the IDA and ideas he has going forward. And, and I just appreciate his service. I want to point that out. Thank you.
Great. And I would just make a comment also on the, on the CDAC. It is both Mayor Rui Prera and Councilmember BG Bratcher. So, uh, this shows that Wickhamburg is fully, fully engaged in our CDAC, uh, business, and I appreciate both of their willingness to serve. So, um, I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Officers, Board of Supervisors, and number eleven, Board of Supervisors, District Boundaries. The board will now consider item number eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number eleven.
Thank you, Jack. And thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, just a real quick clarification for those that are watching. We are not changing the boundaries. So folks aren't mistaken on that. It's just, uh, a logistical, uh, item, I guess, for the upcoming election. It can be, uh, seen as we're making some boundaries changes. We are not. I've already made that clear to one person yesterday. I'm making boundaries changes. We're just moving it, uh, up for the purposes of elections.
Well, I was hoping we could move and make Maricopa County bigger geographically. So I was wondering what county we're gonna cut into. So, all right. Thank you, Steve. Did, we did take the vote? All right. Uh, County Attorney, twelve through thirteen, amend contract to home detention electronic monitoring services, and number fourteen appointments, underschool superintendent. Number fifteen, IGA with the Washington Elementary School District. Number sixteen, FY23 budget adjustments. And number seventeen is a budget adjustment and donation from APS Palaverdy. And I know that, that Juanita called out some changes to item number seventeen. So do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items number twelve through seventeen. And with the notation stipulated earlier by our clerk, on number item number, on number item seventeen, the amount of $4,873 that was, um, spent previous, uh, year.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
How that Steve did all that hard work. Okay, Bill. I got a motion and a second. Thank you to both of you. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Sheriff, number eighteen, FY23 budget adjustment for fuel and overtime. Number nineteen, agreement with the Department of Emergency Management for securing the cities, twenty through twenty-four. Amend agreements, IGAs, MOUs with the City of Phoenix, baseline investigations, Arizona Department of Public Safety, Town of Youngtown, Town of Gila Bend. Twenty-five is a one-time addition to fleet. Twenty-six is an IGA with the Town of Carefree. And number twenty-seven is donations. The board will now consider items eighteen through twenty-seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items eighteen through twenty-seven.
Second.
Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Judicial Branch, Superior Court, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, appoint Superior Court Commissioners as Supreme Court Judge Protems. The board will now consider items twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Management, number thirty, County Manager Jen Pakorski. Thirty, Community Outreach Policy, A1120 Revision, under Assistant County Manager Leigh Ann Bone. Thirty-one is a membership renewal of Maricopa County Workforce Development Board members. Thirty-two is an IGA with the University of Arizona. Number thirty-three is a renewal of MOU Infrastructure Funding Agreement. The board will now consider items thirty through thirty-three.
Mr. Chair, move approval on items thirty through thirty-three with a brief comment.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to item thirty-one, uh, for the membership renewal of members of the Maricopa County Workforce Development Board, grateful to everyone for their continued service, but in particular, I'd like to acknowledge Marcia Viedmark. I have known Marcia for many years. She's been very active. I actually worked with her when I served on the Phoenix City Council with the revitalization of the North Mountain business area. And she's just a tireless volunteer and leader within our community, and so grateful. If, if everyone was like Marcia Viedmark, we'd have no problems in, in Maricopa County. So thrilled for her continued involvement and a real leader in the business community as well.
Thank you, Bill. Very, very well. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under County Offices, Animal Care and Control. Thirty-four is a New Hope Agreement with West Valley Animal Rescue. Number thirty-five is a Competition and Practical with HLP, Inc. Under Budget Office, thirty-six, a contract with Phoenix East Valley Partnership for Maricopa County Waste Management Funding. The board will now consider items thirty-four through thirty-six.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items thirty-four through thirty-six, and I just want to say we appreciate the opportunity to continue our partnership with the East Valley Partnership.
Great. Thank you, Tom. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Elections, number thirty-seven, Precinct Commitment. The board will now consider item thirty-seven. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number thirty-seven.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
There it is.
Love my precinct commitment, Mr. Chairman, but no.
With you. Under Enterprise Technology, number thirty-eight, amend IGA with Department of Veterans Affairs Police. Under Finance, thirty-nine, Resolution for Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse. Number forty, Designee for Expenditure Limitation Report. Forty-one, Electronic Funds Transfer Authorization. Forty-two, Lease Documents for Financing of County Equipment and the Declaration of Official Intent. Forty-three, Funds Transfers and Warrants. Forty-four through forty-five, Policy Revisions for Electronic Funds Transfer Policy, A2512, and Administering Grants Policy, A2505. The board will now consider items thirty-eight through forty-five.
Mr. Ch, oh.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items number thirty-eight through forty-five.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Second.
And thank you, Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Human Resources, number forty-six, IGA with the City of Phoenix. Forty-seven, FY2024 Performance-Based Retention Pay Plan. Forty-eight through fifty-six, Policy Revisions is listed in the agenda. Fifty-seven is amend premium pay rates. Number fifty-eight is market ranges. Number fifty-nine, Budget Adjustment for Park Ranger Retirement Plan.
Chairman, I have two speaker forms from Blue Crawley. One is for item forty-six, IGA with City of Phoenix, and item number fifty-six, the commuter transportation policy. Would like to speak on these two items.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Crawley?
So do I get two on each? Because I'll cover the first one. Used to be that the City of Phoenix bus usage was police and fire. Show your ID, ride for free. And that was so that we had police on the bus was another part of it. Well, Jack, you know, when we did that little dissertation over there at the RP TA on the safety and security, and they said Mesa is going to have the blue line, which is to put police on the rail and on the bus. Most of the incidents occur because of space, individuals being macho or overcrowding, right? So Mesa's answer to get that situation is that another person that unless I'm doing something wrong, he don't need to be around me unless you have probable cause. And that's for the operator and all the rest of the individuals on it. So I know that this is within the county, and I know that this is to get all of your, um, employees to be using transit for getting back and forth to work. But could you make an increase into it with the sheriffs and encourage them to use transit so that they would also be a part of the answer? But then, when I see what you have accomplished over there on what we gave to you in Prop 400, I use transit for the whole weekend. And an effective bus system for the citizenry that we have, let's say, Central Phoenix. The number twelve bus route runs twice an hour. And there's all kinds of the routes that run twice an hour. Is that a metropolitan way of doing it? Now, let's go to your other one, fifty-four, was it? Fifty-six, the commuter policy. I love that word because over in, uh, what was it, Gilbert? We don't want the rail, but we'll take commuter, which is heavy rail, which I would love for this county to, instead of relying on RP TA and that for the, and MAG, that you take the responsibility for this whole area and say, here, this is the minimums for all of our citizens. Because they said that they're going to be expanding on that grid pattern, right? Well, the grid that we put together, we didn't. That was staff that did that. And they did it with the populations in 1990. Or 1985 is where, when we did it. So if you're using population counts for that, Gilbert only does have two roads going through, right? So what I've seen, what you've accomplished in that, which is forty percent of our monies go to staff, and we have the infrastructure of Pitapul. With this new 400, could you get MAG to put in there, you know, the way to do it properly with volumes and congestion and that the infrastructure for the buses there? And do you know how you double the amount of those buses on that route? You double the amount of the buses. And our bus fleet should be triple the size that it is. And I don't see that as what we're gonna be doing to, in that document. All it says is, we're gonna keep on doing what we've been doing because it's been so successful and it supports forty percent of you doing what? Thank you.
Thank you, Blue. Okay. Uh, did I, I can't read. Did I read off everything? We got everything read, and I'm looking for a motion. Okay. Looking for a motion on items forty-six through fifty-nine.
Move approval of items forty-six through fifty-nine.
Second.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Tom. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Human Services, sixty, donations, sixty-one through sixty-seven. Amend IGAs for Community Action Program Activities. Sixty-eight through seventy-four, Agreement Contract and IGAs with Tempe Union High School District, number 213, Area Aging Agency on Aging, Region One, City of Surprise, City of Scottsdale, City of Mesa, City of Glendale, Town of Guadalupe. The board will now consider items sixty through seventy-four.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items number sixty through seventy-four.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Human Services, Continued, seventy-five, rescind and substitute the approval to renew three-year cooperation agreements with urban county municipalities. Seventy-six, rescind action to renew three-year cooperation agreement with the Town of Cave Creek. Seventy-seven, receipt of carryover grant funding and reduction of non-federal share match from the Office of Head Start. The board will now consider items seventy-five through seventy-seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Medical Examiner, seventy-eight, permanent addition to fleet. Under Parks and Recreation, seventy-nine, an MOU with the Arizona State Parks Board. Number eighty, donations. Number eighty-one, Increase to Revenue and Expenditure Authority Souvenir Fund. The board will now consider items seventy-eight through eighty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items seventy-eight through eighty-one.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1574.66]
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Procurement Services, 82 through 88, contracts, IGA for outside legal services, TASER products and services, janitorial services, publication of public legal notices and advertising, e-procurement platform and services, elevator, escalator, walkway, and lift, new construction, modernization, maintenance, and repair services. I've never seen that. Summer Youth Workforce Program. The board will now consider items 82 through 88.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 82 through 88 with just a brief comment.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
I'll go back. Okay. Okay, so I have a motion. Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, just, I'm sorry. If I can go back real quickly on number 88, the Summer Youth Workforce Program. And, you know, we're all advocates for our young people and how do we provide opportunities to, to keep them busy, do something productive, learn new skills, start getting them familiar with the workforce. And this is a program that is being started. There's, there's a couple of agencies, nonprofits, that have stepped up to take this one on. One is the Greater Phoenix Urban League. I know George Dean, I had many, many conversations with him, longtime president, CEO of the Urban League. And, you know, this is a, is one of those programs that really do benefit so many. I remember growing up and I was, had this conversation with, with folks earlier, growing up in the city of Phoenix, city of Phoenix had a similar program. I remember growing up as a, as a young, as a youngster, never participated, but I was very familiar with it. And to be able to now bring this type of program back, I know Phoenix, I don't believe still have a similar program, but we're bringing such a program back to help not only our young people this year, but next year, you know, start, start learning the responsibilities of, of being in that workforce, what, what it's like, you know, clocking in, clocking out, you know, doing the hard work. And then just giving, giving them an opportunity during the summer to keep productive, put those video games down and, and do some good stuff. So this is an exciting program. I'm really excited for the two organizations that are doing it, and I look forward to seeing how this program really shapes up, so.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I'm still trying to get over how, I just felt like I participated in Dr. Seuss with that elevator, escalator, walkway thing. So if, if I could have an indulgence.
Mesa's, you'll go.
I know. So I'm going to go back. I am sorry, we missed a speaker form, and I just looked at it and went, uh-oh. You know, I don't like to blitz through things so fast that people can't, can't speak and get the form filled out. But Ms. Natalie Lewis wanted to speak on item number 72, and I'm very happy to say it was in favor because the board just totally voted in favor of it. So Natalie, you get to tell us why we voted in favor of it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first and foremost, thank you to all of you for the service that you provide to the county. I, I felt just a very intentional need to come down here and talk to you today because not only, I, my name's Natalie Lewis, and I'm with the city of Mesa, and I'm also a deputy city manager. And I, I helped to oversee a lot of the homeless programs that we do and have gotten pretty deep into that work, and in particular during the pandemic. And, and Bruce was here at that point, and there was a lot of alignment between cities and counties during that time as we were trying to struggle and find our way around and work with each other to support each other and try to be consistent. And your, your team has been strong throughout all of that, and I wanted to say thank you. And in particular, Jaclyn, her team members, TJ, Sean, Mike, they have been so responsive to the city of Mesa as we've worked on this particular project, but other ones as well. You know, we came up with the Mesa, the Workforce Center at Mesa, and that was a, was a partnership. So there's been just really good, strong partnerships and alliances. And so on behalf of the city of Mesa, on behalf of myself, of going through an incredibly difficult time, but having colleagues and people like you have doing such amazing work and working with us, I just wanted to come down here and tell you thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Well, before you leave the podium, I gotta ask her, this is a speaker slip. Can we address that? She's representing a government, and, right? And in a space that we've worked together, so can we ask? Okay. Want, want to make sure, because I don't want Blue to hit me with something, but.
I would, I'd dodge it for you.
Yeah.
On all of those things, I would have submitted, but I was just going to be giving you a thumbs up, so thank you for all of the.
Awesome. Awesome. Uh, the question or, or comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, Ms. Lewis, thank you coming down here this morning. I really appreciate it for you to come down here for this one item, but also I think that exhibits and epitomizes the great relationship that Maricopa County has with the city of Mesa. And I always like to say that I believe the city of Mesa is probably the most dynamic city, not in the valley, but probably the entire state. And the work that you guys are doing is just absolutely tremendous. And the reputation that you have, I know you've gotten considerable media attention for the services that you're providing people, and that you're really showing that no one should be left behind. And we really appreciate that, and we really appreciate the work you're doing. And thank you for commending our staff as well. They are terrific, they are amazing. But I also know that you have a great team. And I just want to thank you for coming here, but please extend our gratitude and appreciation to Mayor Giles and the entire council. So thank you for coming.
I absolutely will, and thank you so much, Supervisor Galvin.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Good?
No, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, just piggyback there. I mean, we just went through a number of items through Human Services as well, the number of IGAs with, with not only school district municipalities, but it really shows, it, it does take a village. It really does. Many of our families, I say this all, I preach this all the time, you know, they face tremendous challenges economically and socially. And I think as, as government, for us to be able to partner together, maximize our resources, work together, address some of the challenges facing our, our kids, our families, I think that's what government's about. I really do, is it's working together to address the needs of our constituency, our taxpayers. We just, I just spoke on the Summer Youth Program, are working with nonprofits to address these issues. So I, I thank you for coming. I appreciate it so much, and, and I know, you know, you're, the work down there in Mesa, not my supervisor district, but I do.
That's okay. We still love you.
Yeah.
And, and I will just say that the work that we're all doing together is legacy building. This is once in a generation that we have these opportunities with these federal dollars. And so I feel really confident that we're doing right by our public.
Yeah, thank you for making the drive and, and coming here. And, and, you know, talk about legacy building, I just think I read in the paper about the city of Phoenix that, that is looking at what we did, the county did during the pandemic with that structured campground, and now, now something like that is coming to their, their council to take a look at. And I was very proud of that. I was very proud of the county and Bruce and everybody that put that together, and then, and then we got through the pandemic together, and now it's looking like it's, looking like that, that might be an answer again. So, so thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, now, get back in order again. Jack, if you could give that to Juanita before another one comes flowing back this way. Now we go on to Public Health, 89 through 94. Amend the contracts, IGA with Provider Tech, Washington Elementary School District, Arizona Board of Regents, Chicano, Port La Cosa, and West Valley OBGYN. Unlimited potential in Asian Pacific community in action. Wesley Community and Health Centers, International Rescue Committee, and helping families in need. 95 through 98 is a partnership agreements for immunization program. The board will now consider items 89 through 98.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 89 through 98.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Still under Public Health, number 99, contracts supporting Maricopa County LGBTQ and population. 100 is a contract with Just Communities Arizona. 101 is the Ryan White Planning Council Appointment, which is a resignation. Under Transportation, 102 through 103, an agreement IGA with the SRP Agricultural Improvement and Power District, the state of Arizona. 104 is change order from, or with HDR Engineering. And 105 is easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. The board will now consider items 99 through 105.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 99 through 105.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Setting of Hearings, Air Quality, number 106, AQ 2022-006 Rule 100. Planning and Development, 107, planning and zoning setting of hearings. And under Transportation, 108, road file number 4426-R.2. The board will now consider items 106 through 108.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 106, 107, and 108.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I do see our air quality. Phil McNeely in the audience today. And Phil, I hope you know, the city of Peoria is looking for you. They want to work together. So make sure you talk to Mr. Darwin out there, because I heard that in a meeting. So, okay. Consent Agenda, 109 to 110, donations, 111, duplicate warrants, 112, delinquent property tax interest waiver, 113, Head Start Monthly Report, number 114, mail ballot election request, number 115, minutes, number 116, treasures, collections, and dispersment summary, number 117, secured, unsecured tax rule corrections, and number 118, settlement and resolution of property tax cases and claims. The board will now consider items 109 through 118.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of 109 through 118 or 19? 18.
And you're wearing glasses.
I thought you said 19. Did you say 19? Did you say 18? I'll give it to you. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 109 through 118.
Just saying, my hearing, my, my sight. Okay. So thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Jack, you looked like you were going to jump in on that. Were you going to hit me with something?
No, no, no. We're a team.
Okay. Under Board of Supervisors addendum, County Attorney, 119, quarterly RICO expenditure application, FY 24, Q1, and one-time expenditure application. 120, reappoint director of Elections Day and Emergency Voting. 121, admin correction to County Attorney's Office Intern Stipend Program. Under Risk Management, 122, settlement in Jeffette, Velazquez versus Maricopa County. I can see you're trying to get my attention, Juanita.
Thank you. I do have a speaker form from Diane Barker on item number 120. She would like to speak in opposition for item 120.
Okay. Ms. Diane Barker, please.
Good morning. Clint Hickman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Diane Barker. I reside in District 5. I've been in the valley for three decades, and I come in opposition. I've never met the gentleman Scott Jarrett, and I was not at your Monday meeting. Of course, he's an employee, and so you were in executive session, I understand, discussing this, so I don't know if you asked questions that I would have asked. But Scott Jarrett is on the record from 2022 court record and 2023 in regards to questions about not only the last 2022 election and some of it of 2020. And, you know, you're putting him in here with the Election Day in emergency. We had huge fallops that day. You're very aware of it. You've gotten calls. There's discontent in the public, and, and we need faith in our election system. To get past this, I really think that you need fresh face, you need a task force that will be on election reform you're going to be having in 2024, three elections. And people need to feel confident that their vote will count. So I'm just saying, I can't in good conscience, you know, not speak up and say, this is a chance to get somebody else that he didn't report the printer mistakes that were bad. And the other thing is, is why? Why didn't the county? Helen Purcell's on record for having problems with runback with their printer, and runback was supposed to pay for that, these, where the envelopes didn't fit the ballots, and also they were sent to some wrong addresses. And what I saw in the, the record was that Helen just, you know, passed it over, she had some other business to do. This isn't right. It needs to be corrected.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I did ask for a motion? Not yet? Okay. I, I guess I need to read it all. I thought I just, did I read it off? And I did, okay, but I didn't ask for a motion yet. Okay, looking for a motion on items number 119 through 122.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 119 through 122, and I'd like to make a brief comment once there's a second.
Okay, I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second, and I also like to make a comment.
Okay, motion, a second. Mr. Gallardo, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and yes, of course, I want to talk about item 120. Ms. Barker, I have total respect for you. Oh, there you are. Total respect, and I appreciate your, your thoughts and comments. However, I believe we have a director who has done a phenomenal job. I have been in that office. I have worked in elections for 14 years. I know the challenges they face every day. These are hard-working employees that work so hard and oftentimes only get blamed when things happen that, that are not to our satisfaction. But from day one, Scott has really had taken on this, this, this task. He has brought us through a pandemic, conducting an election. He did something that was totally unheard of, and that is restructuring our election just probably two weeks before because of a pandemic. If you remember the number of calls we've had and meetings, having to restructure how we did elections because of the pandemic. How do we keep our voters safe? How do we keep our, our hard-working volunteers and employees safe in the middle of a, a worldwide pandemic? And still give opportunities for our citizens to exercise their most fundamental right, their right to vote, and he was able to pull it off. And you look at what has happened, not only in that same time period, a primary, a presidential, he has since got us through not only a 2022 gubernatorial election in some of the most trying times, when folks are pushing out conspiracies and unfounded claims without wanting to talk about the facts, and he has marched on. Yes, we, we are going to have problems during our election. There's always something. The question is, are we prepared to address those challenges? When things happen, are we ready to address it? Are we ready to go in and ensure that everyone has a right to vote and, and no one is left out of the process? And Mr. Jarrett has done exactly that. I couldn't be more pleased to support item 120. I think he has done an admirable job. He has come through time and time again in some of the most trying times and a lot of pressure. He has taken the rocks and, and the bullets as we have all had to take over the last several elections. But, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't be more pleased to support the reappointment of Scott Jarrett as our Director for Election Day and Early Voting, Emergency Voting Division.
Thank you, Steve. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo everything that Steve Gallardo just said. When this board took back its statutory authority in a agreement that we negotiated with then Recorder Adrian Fontes, this was a very key hire, was who the Elections Director was going to be. And Scott Jarrett rose to the top because he, a lot of people don't know that he worked very closely on an audit of what had happened. We had issues back in 2018, and he gained a excellent understanding of the election process and then actually helped us to run a much smoother election in November of 2018. Again, something that a lot of people don't know. As Supervisor Gallardo said, Scott Jarrett has gone through unbelievable challenges as our Elections Director, dealing with the pandemic, dealing with death threats, everyone questioning what's being done down there. And no one's perfect. Nothing is perfect. I was there in November of 2022 for days with Scott Jarrett, so I had a unique opportunity to work alongside him. I can tell you, there's no one more committed to this job. He, he, in fact, the issue with Scott is that he needs to take some time off, you know, because he, he, he puts so much into this, and I think he is going to be doing that very soon, so I'm happy for him. We are lucky to have someone of the caliber of Scott Jarrett down there. With respect to issues that occurred in November of '22, in the end, the buck stops with this board, and we have accepted that responsibility. Chairman Hickman and I put out a letter the next day after the election saying we need to figure out what happened. And we brought in, we were thrilled to have, when Justice McGregor accepted the invitation of County Attorney Rachel Mitchell to get under the hood and figure out exactly what happened in November of '22. We know that, and it was not Scott Jarrett's fault. He does not, can we get better? Of course, and we are. But this board has taken the actions needed to run three great elections in 2024. So I have, Scott Jarrett has my full support. And in addition, this board, this item also includes the, another change in the way that we do things here, a slight change but important, which is since 2019, Scott Jarrett has reported directly to this board. If this passes, Scott Jarrett will then report to our, our new county manager, Jim Pakorski. I, I can tell you, as one member of this board, I'm not, I will vote in support of this, but it's not because I'm trying to distance myself in any way from elections, and I assume that my colleagues feel the same way. We're doing this to become even more efficient. There are a lot of logistics involved. There are resources that are needed from the county that are really not elections-related. We believe that this will make the operations even more efficient. But I want to be clear, to the extent that people are saying this board is backing away from elections, that's not the case. Jim Pakorski has the, the complete faith of this board as well as Scott Jarrett, and so I will be voting in support of this item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Vice Chairman Sellers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to add on to what Bill was talking about, and that is that I, I think everyone that's paid any attention to my remarks for as long as I've been on this board is I feel there should be distance between elected officials and the Elections Department. And so this accomplishes that from my perspective. You know, I, coming from, and Bill and I both were on city councils where the county clerk was the person responsible for elections, and the council members didn't really have direct authority over that person, over the, over the clerk. And so I've, I've long felt that even if it's only from an appearance standpoint, that an elected official should not have a direct report handling elections, and, and this gets us to that point. Thank you.
Tom?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm just going to quickly build off of what Mr. Gates said, because I think it was very well-stated and eloquent. But I think, for me, I'm about process. And after each go-around of an election, I think we should always be examining and reviewing and reviewing. and revising and figure out what's the best way to improve process. Legally, the Board of Supervisors is ultimately responsible for elections. So it's impossible for us to distance ourselves from our legal responsibilities and our statutory obligations. But in terms of process, how can we make things better? And frankly, I think this makes the Elections Director's job even easier to do, to work in conjunction with the County Manager on a day-to-day basis, on a process detailed basis, so people out there who are voting and are worried about elections completely understand that we're doing everything we can to make everything better for tomorrow. You cannot go back in the past. We don't have a time machine, but we can control tomorrow. And that's what this is about, making it better on a daily basis. Thank you.
I guess that leaves it up to me to, eloquent, you guys, exactly the way I feel about it. Ms. Barker, I appreciate your comments today. But if, on a common sense approach, we've all, we've all had jobs in this building and out there. Scott Jarrett is in it, was, and still is, in an extremely tough and visible position. Now, compound that because he had five equal and separate bosses wanting to know information on their own accord and wanting to give guidance, advice. We've all kept an open mind through all of these elections that it's tough. You know, we, we've looked into it. If we, if we didn't look into this and ask hard questions of the Elections Director and everybody in elections, we would never be able to canvass the vote. We'd never be able to canvass a vote. This is just the ability to tell our people also that work for this county, we stand behind you. We're going to make sure you do a great job, but we support you and stand behind you because you guys all do great jobs, all 14,000 of you. We're just focusing on this one. So this leaves it, again, to where Jim Pocorsky is the County Manager. She's a direct answer to all five of us. She knows that all five of us are her boss, and we feel very confident that you can help Scott Jarrett with the staffing, with his people, the processes, the procedures, and really, and really get the heft and the support of the county in totality, rather than us waiting for us to make a decision or two. So, so thank you. Again, thank you, Diane. We hear these, these things from the public over and over and over and over and over and over again through social media and, and discussions that we have in our own districts. And we appreciate, we appreciate your comments today. But hearing what I've heard, I'll put this up for a vote. And we do have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm sorry. No, you're right, sorry.
Okay, so, say that again. I like being right. Officially. So we have, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and that is a 5-0 unanimous vote through this county. Okay. Under, moving on, Flood Control District, 123, Declare, Sell Excess Parcel. Number 124, Change Order Contract for Buckeye FRS Number One Repetation Project. 125, IGA for Roosevelt Street Storm Drain Project. Number 126, IGA with the Town of Fountain Hills. Number 127, Easement Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. Under Flood Control District Addendum, and I'm sorry, I will recess the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. I've already read most of it, so then I'll go on to the Flood Control District Addendum 128, Increase Fund 990 Appropriation. The board will now consider items 123 through 128.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 123 through 128.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh. I'll go with the Vice Chair. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors under Library District Number 129 Minutes. Number 130 through 133, Library Assistance Program Agreements.
Excuse me, Chairman. I do have a speaker form from Blue Crawley. He would like to speak on item 133.
Okay.
Back in the day when I lived in Wickenburg, there was a large kerfuffle between the county and the library there. They, you guys are nothing but, right? And it was negative. You weren't the bad guys. And now it says an agreement for more library assistance. Does that mean that was worked out and they figured out you're not the bad guys? I know you can't respond, but like I said, it's like that survey that they said they did over there at RPTA for security and safety. They're saying that they got a cross-section of the ridership in the survey, and they're saying that 50% of the ridership is white males. Oh, I've been riding all this weekend and...
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, this is off the item.
Well, I'm just saying...
Can you pull it back into the Library District, Blue?
Right, pulling it back into the Library District. I appreciate the efforts that you guys are doing, but we don't need government in other places to be not giving the truth. But I'll cover that in, on 137. I also have on for your next items, and if you want, I can comment on that.
Let's, let's go, let's go further down the, the meeting notes. So, so I am looking for a motion in a second for items 129 through 133.
Move approval of items 129 through 133.
Thank you, Bill. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I have a thing in there for...
Through, something else for the library?
No, oh, excuse me.
Okay, so, we have a motion in a second. Do we vote? Aye? Okay. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, under Stadium District, number, we will adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors under Stadium District 134 through 136 as reappointments to the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation Board of Directors. The board will now consider items 134 through 136.
I do have a speaker form from Blue Crawley for items 134 through 136.
Okay, great. Blue, this better be about the stadium.
It is, I'm wanting to know about the roof. Who's responsible for getting that fixed and making it work right? Are these the gentlemen that are going to be negotiating or doing, or what is it? And why is it in the condition that it is? Do we deal with the Diamondbacks on this, or is it the Stadium Districts, you know? And in the future, we need to make sure that those kinds of situations aren't happening, and how do we make that happen with your board?
Thank you, Blue. I, I know that we have staff here that can answer that question really quickly.
I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, you're going to make a, okay. So, looking for a motion on item 134 through 136.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 134, 135, and 136, and I have a comment on 134.
Great, thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second, and I have a comment as well.
Oh, this is going to be easy. Okay, Tom?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I am pleased that we'll be voting today on the reappointment of Ms. Amy Cohen to the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation Board, which is the charitable arm of the Arizona Diamondbacks. I appreciate Amy Cohen's willingness to continue to serve on the Diamondbacks Foundation Board. She is passionate and enthusiastic about the foundation's work and is a great representative for District Two. Amy Cohen was the foundation's 2023 honorary of the Lee T. Henley Community Leadership Award. And I had a pleasure of speaking with her a few weeks ago to learn about her experience on the board and how she liked being on it. And she actually said to me, I was the first supervisor to reach out to her and ask her about her experiences on the board. But her enthusiasm and her willingness to serve came right through and it shone right through, and she had a lot of great and inspiring stories and how effective this board is throughout the community. So I am more than proud to reappoint her to the board, and I wish her the best of luck, and I thank her for her service.
Great, thank you, Tom. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, as we all know, this is the foundation board. So this is the board that's involved in charitable work that the Diamondbacks do in partnership with the county. And the Diamondbacks have really done an incredible job of charitable, you know, charitable efforts throughout the community. And I'm very excited to support the reappointment of Mark Ashton. Mark Ashton is the president of the Foundation for Blind Children, someone I've known for many years, and has done an incredible job. And there have been a lot of partnerships actually between the Diamondbacks and the Foundation for Blind Children, going all the way back to the last time we had the All-Star Game here. So appreciate Mr. Ashton's serving here and agreeing to continue to serve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Item number 137 is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to report regarding public comment email responses?
Chairman, Supervisors, I do not have anything to report regarding email comments, but I do have one speaker form from Blue Crawley.
Okay, thank you, Blue.
As I was stating about the survey that was taken, they said that they got a cross-section of the ridership and such, and they were saying in the document that the ridership is 50% white male. I've been writing, and today I was maybe 5%. And I'm going, well, when you were doing your survey, how selective were you that this is what you're saying it is? So if any of you want to use the transit, it's, all our minority population have to use it because that's what it is. But then when they say that for security, it's 50% white males, and that's who they got the information from, I find it abhorrent. And especially that Mesa is going to do the blue line. We're going to put officers on the bus and on the rail. What did I do? You know, it's not just that one person you're going to be trying to get, but you're violating the civil rights of a lot of others. One of the things that the system does is it says that they're destination, right? We've got 113, 14, and 15 degree heat, and they're saying, we don't want you homeless on our system. We're destination-bound. If you get on our system, you have somewhere to go, and when you get to that stop, you need to get off and get somewhere else. I asked one of them, I said, well, you've got drinking fountains at all the stations. Can somebody get a drink unless they're using the system? And I was told, no, they can be cited for trespassing. I don't need people dying. We had 425 die last year. What is wrong with allowing those marginalized to ride the system during this part of the day and not be dying?
Thank you, Blue. Thanks for joining us today. All right, any other public comments, speaker slips?
No more speaker forms.
Okay, then we will move on to item number 138, which is the Supervisor's Summary of Current Events, and I would look towards County Manager Jim Pocorsky first.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to thank you for approving the pay-for-performance for next year. It is a very competitive job market, as we know, and it's important. This will really help retain the talented staff that we have here and continue our best-in-class services to the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for bringing that up. It's important. Okay, I know I started on this side last time. So Steve Gallardo, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, real briefly, coming to the, what, I guess, the middle of our summer, we're still out there. We have the Fourth of July weekend coming up, and we'll be out there, and many of our little fireworks displays, having tables and talking to folks and engaging as much as we can. So just looking forward to, it's going to be a fun summer. It really is. We're getting out there a lot more because, you know, things are loosening up and not as bad as it was for the last few years because of the pandemic. So it's exciting times. So just want to say, hey, come visit us at any of our parks that we're going to be at, and have fun.
Great, thank you, Steve. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we've had a lot going on. I went to a grand opening for a Dignity Health Graduate Medical Education for Internal Medicine facility in Chandler. And what's really important about this facility is that by doing this graduate-level training, it means that doctors tend to stay in this, in this area. Where they do their training is where they tend to stay. So this, opening that facility in Chandler is really a key thing for us, and happy to see that happening. Also, attended a grand opening for the Healer River Resort, South Mountain Grand Opening. It's at Gilbert Road and Hut Highway. Beautiful facility. I couldn't help but spend some time discussing with the mayor of Chandler that we probably will be addressing some transportation issues with the opening of that casino. Also was at a Gilbert Chamber Business Awards Luncheon. Really neat opportunity to catch up with a lot of friends that I don't see very often there. Was also at a, what was called Taiwan Tech Day, where the Commerce Authority and GPEC brought in 40 high-technology companies from Taiwan to make presentations, and these are all companies that are interested in locating here. So, and really an exciting format. And everyone knows we already have some pretty major investments going on from Taiwanese companies. So this was a very timely thing. Yesterday, I was at Anthem, attending the NACO Federal Fellowship Group that was here. They visited our tech center, I mean, our McTech Center, pardon me. But I was at Anthem where they were reviewing our Anthem test bed, the Smart Drive Program that we've been doing for a while. And the neat thing about what's happening in Anthem is that we're using connected vehicles and smart technology at intersections in a demonstration project. And the importance of that is that it means that because we have been doing this for a while, we are really in a great position to get federal grants to continue this program. And I'm very proud of what the Maricopa County DOT has done to lead in that area. As Blue already mentioned, I am on the Valley Metro RPTA Board. And, you know, there's a lot of concern there about, about the continuation of Prop 400 because that really is what supports us, being able to have a bus system. So a lot going on. I guess I'll end there and let other people have some time.
Hey, take all the time you need. It's important stuff, Jack, that you're, you're putting an ear to and people talking to you about some things, so I appreciate it. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Jaclyn Edwards, I want to singularly point you out today and your team for this fabulous project that we now see being undertaken in Mesa. Absolutely incredible. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you especially on this project and working together with the City of Mesa. The fact that someone from their team comes all the way down here to commend us really is a testament to you and the work that you're doing. So I want to say an appreciation. Thank you. You know, last week I had lunch with Bishop Dolan, who is relatively new to the Valley. He came here from San Diego. We had a fantastic lunch. We talked about a bunch of issues, including many issues that Jaclyn has to deal with and face every single day. The scourge of drugs, homelessness, all the issues that are plaguing our community that definitely him as a bishop and the church completely understand. And it's important that we work with faith leaders across all denominations and faiths to make sure that we're helping people and their lives on a daily basis. In that vein, also last week in Mesa, I took a tour of Dominion, new affordable housing project for people who are 55 years and over. It is a beautiful, gorgeous facility, absolutely incredible, with, I think, over 100, maybe 200 beds. Absolutely fantastic. And we saw residents there literally enjoying their day as they go about, and it was just heartwarming to see. And then finally, I want to thank the County Manager Jennifer Pocorsky once again and their team for the quick response on the diamond fire today, I'm sorry, last night, but I just want to let them know today, all the residents up there, you're in my prayers. And I hope you stay safe, and this is not the last fire we're going to have to deal with. But to wait to see that the county and all other agencies have responded has really been heart... been heartwarming and also makes us proud. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really appreciated the opportunity yesterday to meet with the NACO group, who is here, members of congressional staff from all around the country, and had the opportunity to welcome them to Maricopa County. I know you, you met with them as well. And we spoke about elections. The County Recorder Stephen Richard was there, and we also had a presentation from Scott Jarrett. Did a, did an excellent job. So it's great to have these folks from around the country coming out here to see the, the excellent work that's being done in elections in Maricopa County. And thank you very much, Supervisor Sellers, for making it out to District Three in Anthem. You know, had to give you a hard time about that for coming out, but we're, we're thrilled to have you and very proud of the work that's been done out there by McDot. And then finally, there's been, you know, some news reports recently about Senator Steve Kaiser up in, up in our area, who has resigned from the State Senate and pursuant to state law. The PCs, Republican PCs in LD2 got together earlier this week, and they have forwarded three names on to the Board of Supervisors. So we're just kind of starting that process. So stay tuned for more details on that. But we take, as this board always does, our responsibilities for appointments very seriously, and we'll be handling this one in the same vein. So I apologize, Mr. Chair, but with that, I do need to, to step off and, and get into another meeting here. So my apologies, but thank you very much.
Well, I'll bust on you a little bit because I got to get to a plane flight, but hey, you go do you. Now, Bill, thank you for, for everything. My comments are just brief. I, I was just going to mention, you mentioned NACO being out here and congressional staffs. I was able to meet them at Lake Pleasant, an absolute gem of a park, which I think is, I think it has, I think it still has the most people going there, especially during the pandemic, because I knew there were lines getting in there so people could get out. Park staff did a great job, and CSA was there, of course, NACO was there, and those congressional. It's good to, to meet the staff right there. We, we do have great water policy. There's, it was right there. It was a beautiful lake, and that lake is there because of multi-jurisdictional with, with not just parks, but the federal government. And they, they got to see that. And boy, it looked inviting. So much so inviting that I'm going to bring it up again. You came out and talked about people drowning up there, having the greatest time, and then we keep suffering drowning fatalities at Lake Pleasant. And, and it happens quite often through the summer. So it's not just your pools that, that you have to be careful around. These lakes and these open bodies of water can be the greatest thing in the world, but it also can end lives. So everybody be careful. It's getting hot. We'll see more and more people out there, novice boaters as well as professional boaters, and you got, just be careful. I'd like to see the fatalities and the drowning stop in the, in these things, and that's, comes with personal responsibility to yourself and your family members. So with that, I think that's what, we'll wrap it up. So we are adjourned.